Eric Skalcove. Now we have each candidate give their open remarks. We'll start with Mr. Guy.
Thank you, thank you all for being here tonight. I'll make it a little brief because I've been here four years now. I've run through four budgets. I'm a local resident of St. Mary's County, been in the 400 rates all my life, except for the 26 years I spent in the United States Air Force. Proud to serve and proud to serve now. Also came back, I opened my own business up 11 years, I'm a small business operator also. And I also took in, was on the Board of Appeals for five and a half years. And also spent four years as a representative of the city. So that takes me pretty qualified to do the job as somebody after the qualification. But some things I really want to get into is if you want my bio, you can go to the county website, just a bio online. Also, for those of you who want to know what we've done the last four years, we had a great state or the county executive summary, all of them are online. You just go to the county website, get through that. Something I wanted to get right now, before we get, we've only got a couple minutes left, is that we just recently, the last few months, have had the three bonding agencies and also our auditors give us, I would call it, a tour and coffee court cards, A+. We did great in the county in management, great in the county as far as financial responsibility. We have a balanced our budget every year, plus we actually gave two tax decreases, both 2016 and 2018, we dropped property taxes. We did capital improvements. We jumped in the line right away with the FPR Boulevard and then set in there for years since 1975, just pieces, 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 and never completed. And I do firmly believe this, we solved a lot of traffic, problems, and I solved that just a few years ago when this big, this Todd Morgan, we have Todd, something Todd Morgan is, this guy Admiral Rock came down to the district, just where in our president command is based out here, and he told me several times repeatedly, said the biggest problem was people kept saying there was a problem with transportation on and off the base. And he said, we probably could do more, I said, sir, we're going to do that, we're going to do this route. We got improvements in Route 4 Quarter, working on, Leonardtown right now being worked on. And of course down at Ridge, Route 5 going down to Scotland, that's not solving our problem here. But the big thing is we've been extremely active the last four years in all this stuff. Economic development is a key thing. We solved diversification outside of the nation. We have gotten several incentives gone through, for example, any company that employs 10 or more people, we give them tax credit. We want them to grow, and we look for more things. So with that being said is, we are, and also especially school, no doubt in my mind is, if you give one of my cards out there, you'll find the key things, and of course, is education, public safety, roads and transportation, and that's the key. I'm sorry my time is up, but I believe in full funding and I hope you understand that we've done great this last four years, please vote for Randy Guy then.
Thank you, and good evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the NAACP for hosting us this evening. My name is Howard Thompson and I'm running for County Commissioner President this year. I'm a lifelong resident of St. Mary's County, who's been attached to Harvard with my wife for 40 years. We raised our children in Hollywood, in the house that our relatives built over 150 years ago. I've had the honor to help citizens throughout my life. For 28 years I've worked for Christmas and April, not only as a volunteer but as their president for more than 12 years, leading a workforce of 1,000 volunteers at no cost to the homeowners and especially no cost to the taxpayers. I know there are still many people in need. As a commissioner and chairman on both the zoning Board of Appeals and the planning commission, and serving on various other boards, I've gained relevant experience by helping this county in a constructive and meaningful way. It has taught me how to be a leader, one that has a clear vision for the county. This demands I work across party lines to help our citizens. I have participated on different budget planning processes throughout my career with the Lumbergh School and with various government departments. Having this knowledge will allow me to help create financial plans and guidelines so that the county can reach its goals. I plan to keep you informed through transparent, honest, and easy to understand communications, which will help everyone understand the Board of County Commissioners. I know you have all seen emails and posts on social media that suggest I'm a tax and spend Democrat. Nothing would be further from the truth. I can see, I can see both sides of complex issues. I know what we need most in local government, and it's community leaders who are willing to compromise and are willing to work across the aisle for the betterment of its citizens. I respect hard work and the value of a dollar, especially your tax dollar. I'm not here to play politics, but I'm here to provide practical, common sense solutions for everyone. Together we'll put St. Mary's County first. We need a strong, community focused leader who is accountable to our growing community, someone to move us into the future while honoring the past. And I know I'm ready, I'm up to the task, and I humbly ask you all for your support.
My name is Roy Alvin, I'm running for County Commissioner for the selection district. A little bit about me, I'm a lifelong resident of St. Mary's County, and I grew up on Snowville Farm in San Diego, which the county just purchased and turned it into a park. My parents can't take it there, they just flag a farm predominantly. I went to Tapacan High School and graduated in 68. I'm an Army veteran. After getting out of the Army, I went to work for, what's now Buck Rising, I worked there 38 years. Started as a home installer, ended up installing high speed data to the base, St. Inigo's, county government everywhere. I think I helped bring the county into the modern times. I'm running for assistance of St. Mary's County. This lady here, that gentleman there, hopefully to make their life a little bit better, take their few worries out of their day to day life. We have a good economy. Beans, beans, dollars come through NAS. But with a great economy comes issues, traffic, school issues, a lot of population. People say our role in character is in jeopardy, I think we've got a good role. Character, life forms are doing good, I see food is doing good. With a good economy comes issues of traffic, infrastructure. In the next elections, we're going to need strong leaders to make tough decisions, and I think I can be that leader.
First off, thank you to the League of Women Voters, the NAACP, and the Lexington Park Library for hosting this forum tonight. It's great to be here. My name is Eric Colvin, I'm running for the first commissioner district, and I'm born and raised in St. Mary's County. I attended public schools in St. Mary's County, I graduated from Leonardtown High School in the top 10 of my class, and as president of the National Honor Society. I have a bachelor's degree from Salisbury University in political science and history. I graduated there summa cum laude, and I was the commencement speaker. I have a master's in business from the College of William &amp; Mary. Both of my grandfathers and my father started small businesses in St. Mary's County. My mom worked as a paraprofessional in our schools. My brother is a veteran of the United States Marine Corps. My sister is a licensed social worker. I have another brother who works in our parks, and my youngest sister is working to be a teacher in our public schools. My career has been with local defense contractors. I'm a senior financial analyst, where I deal with budgets and the millions of dollars made up of taxpayer money that go to support the warfighter. So I understand and recognize the trust that I'm asking you to put in me to manage your tax dollars. My involvement in county government, I was a graduate of the Citizens Academy, which is a great program. I encourage everyone in here to sign up for it next year and participate in it. If you haven't, you get a wonderful overview of our county government. I'm a longtime member and a former chair of the Commission for People with Disabilities, and we did a lot of great work and are still doing a lot of great work for people in our community. My wife Joanna worked at St. Mary's College in the Disuse of Rent Dollars program, and just recently this year she decided to stay home with our nine month old Sidney. Sidney might win for being the youngest person here tonight. So if he starts cheering for me in the middle, you'll have to excuse him. I'm running for office because I love St. Mary's County. St. Mary's County is my home. It's not just where I live, it's our home. But there's a lot we need to work on. We have infrastructure that hasn't kept up with the growth of the county, and we need to continue to work on that. We need to complete FPR Boulevard. We need to work on this opioid crisis, and we need to support the health department, the sheriff's office, and all that they need in order to stay ahead of this crisis. And we need to ensure that our schools are safe and that we strategically plan for the future. Thank you.
For Commissioner President, I'm going to start with Mr. Thompson. What procedures or protocols would you implement to communicate with boards and commissions?
Lisa, if I say that right, how would I, say that for me one more time?
What procedures or protocols would you implement to communicate with boards and commissions?
Well, I'd be in touch with all my boards and commissions. You know, as president of the county commissioners, it's your job to do so. I would count on them to keep everything civil and work in a way that's productive with their members. I hope I'm understanding this question right, but moving forward, I believe in working with everybody across the line in the county. As far as working on any board or anything like that, any procedures, I would first have to look at them, see how they're moving forward, see if there's anything I can recommend that might help them. They might have something that they could recommend to help me, but that's how I would do that.
Mr. Guy?
Yes, sir.
Actually, I'm proud to say in the last four years I've really worked hard to bring boards, all under the same system. We have a set of bylaws that's unique for all the boards. We brought them all into public arena. I have other meetings televised, recorded, and minutes quickly put out. For those who meet in a tri, say every three months or whatever, they immediately send me a copy of their end draft minutes, so if there's any action that needs to be done, we can act on it as board commissioners immediately. If not, before you get signed, it takes three months to get that done. We have just established a new emergency service board, we had committees, so now we just started a new youth committee, so we're trying to put all these boards together. We got about 41 boards now, or 42 that are established out there. So it's very important, all of these are the eyes and ears of the commissioners, they bring recommendations to us so that we can act on them, and so we're able to keep communication right now, we do.
Mr. Colvin, second question.
Thank you. The county's boards and commissions, it's a wonderful thing that we do in our county, having these boards and commissions. I have served on the Commission for People with Disabilities, my wife serves on the Commission for Women and the Human Relations Commission, my brother serves on the Commission for the Environment and the Parks and Recreation Board. These boards and commissions exist to advise the county commissioners, and they are vital in that role. And so as a former chair of a commission, it's on me to reach up to the commissioners whenever I have a recommendation. And we were very successful in doing that. This Board of Commissioners has been great at listening to their commissions and learning from them, getting their advice, because the commissions are made up of experts in their fields, and it's just a great program that the county has. I encourage you to look into it, we're always looking in the county for more citizens to serve on these different commissions, they need people to serve, so please look into that and serve if you have the time.
Mr. Allen, second question.
Having the boards to advise, criticize is a important thing, and if elected, my folks will always be open to pick information and what is good use.
Starting with Mr. Guy. What is your opinion on the harm reduction program by the county health department? What would you do to reduce opioid epidemic?
We work closely with the health department now, at every phase, not just with, of course commissioners deal with the financial part of it, but we understand, we get briefings from Dr. Breger constantly on what the county can do to help opioid addiction problems. And with the various other functions out there, it's rather difficult because sometimes we, as we especially older people like me who've never done drugs, have a hard time understanding what people need drugs to start with, but that's the way it is, and we do have a very serious problem. We have a lot of deaths, I don't know if from young people, but older people also. Some of us suffer various diseases and everything, the doctors administer all these drugs, and we've got control, we've got to control all this. And I think we're working with that right now, our health department's working at it, and we'll continue working, I can't say we'll totally eradicate this, but push it down to a low level of acceptance, I can't say it's ever acceptable, but get to a lower level manager.
Mr. Thompson, second question.
I don't think this is a problem that just the health department can solve. It's a big problem, it goes across the board, it's young and old, like nothing we've really ever seen. I think the health department, the sheriff's department, along with Sheriff Cameron, Captain Dietrich at the correctional center, organizations like Walden, Pathways, but they also have to work with the community. It's a joint effort, it's going to take a lot of people to get through this. In my lifetime, I don't think I've ever seen a drug that's taken over a wider spectrum of people in all my life. Doesn't matter, but it's going to take a lot of people to find a cure and a path. We're not going to find a straight out cure, we're going to have to find a path to take in order to do that. It's going to take a collective bunch of people to do that, and we've got good people in the county here that'll help, and I'll be there to help them.
Okay, second question for, did you want?
Can we address that one? Sorry, we don't have to.
It's not a difficult question, why? I guess.
Just to touch on it very quickly, the first step that we have to take is, with this opioid epidemic, is the acceptance and the realization that it is a substance abuse addiction. It's not something that people are choosing to do. People are not choosing to be addicted to opioids. So once we've realized that, then we can work towards treatments for them. And working, as the commissioner president and candidate talked about, with the health department, with Walden, with the sheriff's office, with our first responders, the rescue squad people, when they show up on the scene, their lives are put in jeopardy as well. And also I just read recently, within the last week, that because of all the focus on the opioid epidemic, there's a rise in other hard drugs, meth and stuff. So that's something that we also have to be aware of and stay focused on. Thank you.
Mr. Allen?
I think we need to work with the open funding weekend for the sheriff's department, the health department, all these other agencies, and not much more would be said just to try to alleviate, get rid of this drug problem.
Since it seems like everybody's answering these questions, I'm going to start on the district one side here. Mr. Allen, we'll start with you. How would you rate the county's comprehensive plan? What needs to be improved in the plan?
I'm agree somewhat with the plan, I think we've done good so far, but I really need to study more to be perfectly honest with you.
So the comprehensive plan, Randy, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that that's up for review very soon, within the next year or so, that's something we definitely have to look at, especially when we look at the Lexington Park District and the comprehensive plan. It's a lot bigger than just Great Mills Road, it extends up the road, up 235 quite a ways, and without a doubt we have to address traffic congestion and other issues like that when we look at the plan and see how we can better serve the county to ensure that these problems are solved. Thank you.
Mr. Guy?
Actually, the county has a plan for election departments, pretty close to being done. We've worked hard, we're doing some overlays with the IP departments and everything, to work with the land use and growth management, and all the various departments, and it's come to be a great plan, try to concentrate all of our growth areas within our town centers. And we're working now with the Northern Park going the same way, for example, up where Charlotte Hall, start plans up through there. And these things help us to develop needs as far as infrastructure and et cetera within those areas, and then easily you can go to these things and see overlays of the various zoning ordinances and zoning laws that apply to your particular piece of land. So it's very important that we complete the entire plan, but Lexington Park is just about completed, we approved some of it already, so it's just a matter of some of the overlays being completed. Thank you.
I think the comprehensive plan is still a plan that needs some work. We're changing, we're growing every day. In order to have a good comprehensive plan, you have to have, you have to have good infrastructure, roads, and the zoning laws that come with that. We're still working on that, these roads are, the road plans and the infrastructure plans are far from being done. Until then, I'm hoping that the comprehensive plan, the commissioners have been working on this diligently, it's still going to take some more work. Needs to be reached out to different boards, I can help with that. Being on the planning commission, I'm one of them, I'm more than happy to keep on working on that, but we have to have a good, strong, comprehensive plan in order to keep this Navy base and everybody that's with that happy and to keep everything in line. We've got a big county, we have to keep it going.
Mr. Thompson, second question. Explain how you plan to guide the progress for the major highway project of needed improvements to Route 5 and Great Mills Road corridor. Is it because I'm too close? So I'm going to catch me today. Explain how you plan to guide the progress for the major highway project of the needed improvements to Route 5 and the Great Mills Road corridor.
Well, first off, it's a state road, we have to work with our delegation on that. We have to have a good, strong delegation that will take that message to our governor, who has started working with roads, has started leading that way into that, and we have to have that strength, and we've got to stay on it. It's just, it's not something that we can talk about this month, then just see what happens in a month or so. It's something that we have to talk about and be about and stay about, and make sure that everybody in the state knows, we need these roads. I mean, I have children, they're not shy, they come home at night, they tell me how long it took them to get home tonight. Great Mills Road corridor, tough action, when you have the state highway comes before you when our commission will make improvements, tells you that road is fine, and by law, we can't overstep that part of it. It's tough, we have to make sure that these roads are well delegated.
Mr. Allen?
I agree with Tom, they're state roads, we have to work with our delegation. In my career at telephone company, I went through two road widening, it was a nightmare, but we definitely need it, and we have to work with our state delegate to get the money for it.
So I'm fortunate in my job that I work in St. Inigo's, so I do not have to deal with the traffic of 235 on a daily basis. But I do see the congestion at the Great Mills, Route 5 intersection every day, and it backs up. It's a especially dangerous situation if you have fire trucks, ambulances that need to get through there, and that's something that we need to prioritize that when we work with our state delegation. We need to make sure that we're all on the same page, that we can bring a united message up to the state, and that we can get these roads corrected. Thank you.
Mr. Guy?
Well, these funds we're talking right now, these roads are already under funds right now. The Great Mills Corridor right now, they're going through acquisition of property at this time. Leonardtown, for example, Route 5, the clearing already gone for those, you've seen that. And the acquisition for property down even on the Route 5 going down to Scotland has already been started, acquisition of property. It takes a lot of time to do these roads. For us, if we can get this FPR Boulevard done, it would be a huge accomplishment to take traffic off of Route 235. State funding was cut for us almost 12 years ago, about an 80% cut was done to the county as far as funding. So that made a big impact on us all these years since then, we're having to use even our own funds and plus borrowed funds in order to do over paving, et cetera. So it's been a tough process, it's hard to get, Governor Hogan is doing his best he can to get more funding towards this for highways, but it's a slow, slow process. So be patient.
Mr. Guy, I'm going to stay with you. How do you increase the availability of lower income affordable housing?
That's a tough one when you're in a county that has really one of the highest incomes averaged in the state. But the thing is, we have done several projects this year, we approved apartment complexes and also townhouses gave tax credits in order to keep the rent and pricing down, in the Lexington Park area especially. It's very difficult to get contractors to build affordable housing, but we've seen this by going to some small manufacturers, they're saying the problem is they're trying to get people into the ground floor of their companies, and it's very tough for them to live here, they've got to usually live together, two or three in a house, or two or three in a condo or an apartment. But tax credit is one of the key things that we can do as the county commissioners for some of these units that are reestablishing themselves, or building new units to provide low cost housing, we're working on that. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes, being on the planning commission, it is very hard to get, I'll say developers in line for the ADA and low, or not necessarily low income, but workforce housing. We had a group that came before us, Tux and Coe on Peg's Road, it's one we haven't seen like that in a while. On the ground floor, they're willing to build ADA compliant housing and veteran housing with ease to get in and out for those folks that need that, and also with better, more higher priced units on top. We need that in a development district, because it's the only place the STS buses will serve. By doing that, it'll bring this county forward. We have to have more groups that are willing to put different parts of our housing needs into their complexes when they build that. With that, first off, it brings everybody together, lets everybody know who needs help, and builds better. Thank you.
Mr. Allen?
Well, we need to work with the housing authority, for one, they can find land even, build affordable housing, and I'm with the rest of the guys, tax credit, maybe a poverty tax incentive for a couple years to get these projects open and running.
And just to echo what everyone says already, the tax credits are a good idea, there's, one of the interesting things that you learn when you're running for office is that people think that in this role you can solve all the problems, and we can't. If I'm commissioner, affordable housing will still be an issue, but it is an important issue. We need affordable housing for our entry level teachers, our entry level professionals. We have a highly technical workforce in this area, but when they're entry level out of college with a lot of debt, they need to be able to afford a place to live. And so this is definitely something that we need to prioritize and continue to work toward, but there's no easy fix to it.
Mr. Thompson, the current Board of Commissioners has publicly stated that they are protecting the flat funding for all county departments for the next five years. If you are elected, how will you meet the needs of our growing community with respect to public education, safety, and public infrastructure services?
Well, it's easy to say, and it sounds real good to say flat funding. Our needs change every year, our departments change every year. Board Education, Sheriff's Department, just for instance, they change every year. I mean, we've seen what happens with small disasters that have to bring things in, and different, different problems that arise. I can't ever say flat funding. I mean, how will I come up with the money to fund something when it does? That's why we have five good commissioners sitting together that will make sure that we can find a way to do that. We have a good chief financial officer for the county, we have to find a way. I just can't say, hey, we're just going to keep things flat. It does sound good, it sounds, you know, hey, you're not going to raise anything. I'm not a raise the taxes guy, I want to let you know that right now, but I can't say that a department might need that. that needs money to do a certain item that is very valuable to the community won't be able to get funding from the commission.
Mr. Allen.
Funding's a big issue. Nobody wants to hit worries tax increase. I'm betting, but we might have to look at that. Education, school safety, law enforcement, fight the drug issue, affordable housing. We might have to fight for.
So we're in an interesting time period right now where going forward, the county will probably see increased revenues due to the Trump administration's tax cut, but the state of Maryland did not provide an equal tax cut. So there may be increased revenues coming down to the county, yet at the same time, we don't know the full impacts of the Kerwin Commission and what their report is going to show, which could cause increased costs for the school system. So we will have to take it every budget as it comes and evaluate the needs as we see them and the revenues that we have. Thank you.
Mr. Allen.
If you don't, Mr. Guy.
Let me follow. Sorry. Who's the question again? I've got another question after.
I apologize about the, the current board of commissioners.
That's me.
Has publicly stated that they are, they're projecting flat funding for all county departments for the next five years. If you are elected, how will you meet the needs of our growing community with respect to public education and public infrastructure services?
You know, I haven't missed a beat in the last four years. I don't remember flat funding coming out the next five years. We look at each budget. This board has done a great job of taking the budget. We look at the entire budget. At the end of the budget process, we try to look at, can we reduce taxes or not? And I'm proud to say in 2016, 2018, we did. But the budget process is a neat, neat process every year. Just what you just called, we just talked about the Kerwin Commission. I know people say, we've got a large surplus right now, but we're going to need that. I think this Kerwin Commission is going to throw a big action on our plan next year. I really do believe that it's going to cost more funding for the county. And right now, we're seeing the state reduce their spending in schools as an increase for us. But the budget process is done on a yearly basis. At the end of that process, towards about April, May, we make decisions, can we do any tax cutting or not? Do we have to leave it alone? Right now, we're living in a great surplus because of the federal, and that may change. That's a bump, I say, you just got to be careful.
Okay, sorry about that. Mr. Allen, I'm going to start with you. My next question. Our county has three senior centers in the community, or youth centers. Please tell us what steps you would take to move the community centers in Lexington Park forward.
Community centers is a good idea, but until we get a plan starting forward, I thought we suggested opening the schools up under someone, kids will have access to recreation, the libraries, they have a place to go. It will also create some jobs for teenagers or people that need a job. But until we get actual community centers and funding, just let's open up the schools. We've got them in every area.
There's a lot of support in the community for a community youth center right now, and I've publicly said that I support a community youth center. What I need to know, what I want to see is what activities would be going into it. It's easy to build a building. It takes money, it takes time, but a building we can build, but then filling that building, what's going to be going into it is another question. One thing that I'd love to look into is I spoke at the last forum during the primary about how I'm such a huge fan of the RSVP, the Retired Senior Volunteer Program. Perhaps there's a way that those retired seniors that volunteer could work with the community youth center. That could be a great partnership. But we need to, the community youth center is in the county plans going forward, and we can take a look at it. There's a way to move it up sooner in the plans, but it is something that the county is going to be building and doing. There's no question about that.
Mr. Guy.
Actually, the youth center is planned right now in 2022 budget. So I don't feel like we're going to push it up any further, but I do believe that for those who are interested in this youth center in this area, you need to organize a little better. You need to start a partnership type program, just like the Garvey Senior Center. That group got together, and I think they've got well over about $40,000 raised to help the Garvey Center when it opens up. And they were very active, they got petitions together and thousands of signatures in order to move it up in the process. They formulated partnerships, and that's the way to do it. You've got to be active as a community in this and get also, business in the community, get some more support out there other than just saying, we need this. You've got to figure what you need, number one. Number two, you've got to get people together that will sponsor you, help you out. And number three, get enough people involved where you come to commit to say, look, we got this support, here it is, we want to go forward now.
The commissioners are, from what I just heard, they have that on the budget coming in 2022 for a large community youth center here in Lexington Park, which we need. Kids need a place to go in the evenings, not just on the weekends or the summer time. They need something to go, someplace to go safe, someplace where they feel comfortable in the evenings all year round. However, we can afford to do that. We have commissioners, we can reach out to corporate. We also have to reach out with the community. There's been a lot of folks in our community that have started that drive to get there. We, this is something we have to have, not just in Lexington Park, though, smaller centers throughout the county. And also before, I get cut off real quick, senior centers. I think they need to be open in the evenings for longer. I have a lot of people that say, you know, we don't want to go to the bar and meet with our friends and talk and maybe play a hand in cards. Maybe keep that center open a little longer. Just wanted to add that.
Mr. Colvin. St. Mary's County has not met, has not met its revenues versus budget for the past two years, yet it has a surplus. Why does this surplus exist? How do you handle this, have you handled this issue in the future?
So we are a very well managed financial budget process. The budget process has already started for the next fiscal year with the calendar. The county does a great job. Our chief financial officer does a wonderful job sticking to the policies where we maintain the fund balance policy of the county reserves to revenue above 15%. We need to just take a look as we go forward. There's a lot of change coming in the next year with how much revenue comes down from the state and what our costs are, as I talked about earlier. So that's something we'll have to take a look at individually with each budget, not something that I can just give a blanket general answer. Thanks.
Mr. Guy.
Like I said, the budget process, right now this year, we do have a rather large process, surplus, maybe because of the change in the federal regulations as far as taxes are concerned. But one thing about this, all of us out here have got a savings account or some kind of a budget item to save for an emergency, in case we lose our job or whatever, we've got to have it spread. The same way with this surplus. When we had a great fire in a school down at Spring Ridge, the county had enough surplus to quickly jump on board and fix this school and even add to it to increase its size. So it's things like this, and I can see the surplus we have right now is going to be used. We already gave $1 million last week to the school system for the emergencies that they're having with remodeling the schools in order to meet the needs as we have more students. So these things, and then we are being forced soon to have a pet type of, might say, pet store, I call it, this one looks like a cop county opens up here, comes soon, Charles County is getting ready to break ground. We're going to have to do that, but we'll be able to take this money, pull down that budget to pay for a $160 million.
Mr. Thompson.
Would you repeat that question, please? Thank you. I like hearing you ask the questions.
I like you stalling. St. Mary's County has not met its revenues versus budget for the past two years, yet it has a surplus. Why does this surplus exist? How would you handle this issue in the future?
Well, we're very fortunate to have that revenue coming in. But the way the tax laws have changed, we have this coming in, and we're fortunate to have the commissioners and the financial officers that work for the county there to keep that money straight. As said, we will need these money and a surplus here and there. We're fortunate that keeps our bond rating, it keeps us in the black, I'll say. If a problem comes up, we have those funds. We need to keep doing that. Elaine Kramer taught Jeanette Hudmore very well over the years, how to help lead the commissioners in the right way in order to keep our funds up, keep our county bond rating well, and everybody looking for it.
I think we need a surplus in case of emergencies. Maybe every now and then we might have to dip in it, but not a lot. I think the bond rating is important to the county, but we need that surplus.
Mr. Guy. Harris radio emergency communication. We now have a properly functioning backup system. How do we address the problems with the prime system?
Okay, right now, that is, appears to be a problem, but right now, our emergency service director right now, Mr. Walker, is going through the final testing phase, and he will bring to the commissioners the final, do we have a real problem or not? We're not really sure. We've had some instances out there, but it's the same throughout the country for other radio systems like Motorola, we don't have. But we just signed an agreement for the state of Maryland for a backup system, and that's going to be good. It's Maryland first, it's all over. And right now, the infrastructure we've already paid for, it's all up and running. It's a matter of testing the Harris radios and their software and signals to make sure what's everywhere in our county. That is not completed yet. As far as I'm concerned, we need to wait until that's completed, and then Mr. Walker will bring it before the commissioners with a decision to be made, accept the future maintenance of this system or not. There's a future 10-year, multi-10, $20 million process for that, and we may have to relook at that. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson.
It's a good thing we have a great backup system in there because our main system right now, as was just said, we're not quite sure. They're not quite sure. We have to have, to make sure that we have a primary system in order for our EMS, fire and rescue, sheriff's department and all, everybody can be in communication here in the county, it's of utmost importance. It's really a good thing that we have that backup system. The county has invested a lot of money in the primary system. They're still testing. I'm hoping that all that will go well and everything at the end of the road will be, that's what we need. But right now, it's not. This is, this is a big problem. I mean, when an ambulance has been called, or fire, or rescue, whatever the case may be, we have to be able to make sure that we're communications in there. Thank God we have that backup system. Hopefully this primary will come through. Hopefully it goes well and our money has been a good investment over the years.
Hopefully Harris, the issues they have, they can straighten the mood. We brought a lot of money invested into it. Thank God we got a backup system. Hopefully they get to blow today.
There's no doubt that there's concern among our first responders, especially about the validity of the Harris radios, and I understand that concern. Like they said, we need to complete the testing of the system because there's been a lot of money spent on it, but I also believe there should be constant testing of the system as it goes forward. There should be constantly be tested and refined to ensure that there will not be any mistakes during a critical time period. I also, as commissioner, would rely on the emergency services board and talking to the first responders to ensure that if they're having problems with it, I need to hear about it in order that we can do what's right. We need to, we need to protect the people who are protecting us. There's no question about that. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson, are there any developers interested in Americans with disabilities and/or senior housing? Please explain.
Have to look at my notes. Don't want to miss, let's quote a name. We did have a group come before us, Nick, with the Puckson Cove group on Peg's Road. They were interested. I think their primary interest was in the ADA veteran and senior housing that they were there to develop. They were willing to do an ambitious development on Peg's Road in the middle of the development district, and they wanted everything to do well. We have had others, I can't give you their names, I can't remember their names right now, but they've been very few. That one group, though, came in and what they presented to the planning commission that night gave me a little hope that if the other developers follow it, listen to it, should watch it on YouTube, they too can learn what the county needs, what a lot of people want, and what is vital for that, for the folks that need that part of the housing.
Mr. Allen.
Again, affordable housing is a big issue. We have to work with the housing authority, and if it's also that's in residence, we have to give them a break and help them along.
Having served on the commission for people with disabilities, I definitely applaud any developers that are willing to build ADA accessible housing. We live in a military community here. There are wounded warriors that could make good use of this ADA accessible housing. And it's not complex. It's good stuff that benefits the community as a whole and makes us a richer community, and I am excited and proud to support any developers that are willing to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Guy.
I'll look back at this, you don't forget me. No, well, it's important that we have this ADA compliance, and we pushed forward with that. We even, when I first got in office, we actually got an ADA compliant position on the staff to monitor, and that was very important. Eric Ossis group pushed through to get that shortage happening, and we look forward to anybody who wants to put out some affordable housing as ADA compliant will be a plus. We have a group that's looking right now, it's some glow houses, they call it, and mainly for veterans, but once again, they're talking about ADA compliant on these even. So it's a plus, plus for anybody to, for this community, especially as we get older. Even my own house, when I built this 16 years ago, I made sure all the doorway was 38 inches or wider. I only had one step getting to the front door, and I could live entirely on the first floor. So all these things, all of us should think about things like that. And we have, say, we have people on staff now that give us advice on what to do and how to do it.
Mr. Allen, if you win, what is the first project you may tap?
I have three priorities, law enforcement, education, and school safety. There's some ticket stuff. We've got a good economy. We should be able to find those three priorities. And that's my priority.
Mr. Colvin.
If I win, I believe that I will be very quickly engrossed in the budget process, so that will be the first thing that I'll be working on. But along with that, the work that's being done at our local airport is just phenomenal. I don't know if you realize this, but our local airport has over 33,500 takeoffs and landings every year. That's incredible. And it's expanding, working with Jack Bailey and our delegation to get that third building at the higher ed center. There's a lot of things going on in completing the FDR Boulevard. These are all things that we need to just get moving on and not sit around and wait on. Thank you.
Mr. Guy.
We've been involved in major fights the last, of course, almost four years, and myself and we see all continue the FDR Boulevard. Our Garvey Senior Center is very important for the, I worked on Census Bureau in 2010, and our senior population between 2010 and 2013 has grown by 245%. We need to get ready for that, so that's why I'm pretty hard for the senior center. Our library definitely needs to expand that, and we're working on that right now. All the other... All the other road constructions, of course, are plus plus, but unfortunately, given the state's complete a little problem to get that done, and that's the main thing I want to keep pushing through. Also, in the schools, there's no doubt that's just the most funding, that's almost fifty-one percent of our budget every year, and we'll continue doing that, and we went millions of effort every year, and almost nineteen million, no, I'm sorry, sixteen million over millions of effort the last four years, and we just gave another million dollars for school safety. That's number one priority, we hold in that, we're going to look at everything, and let us know we need to do more. Thank you.
Just making sure. After meeting with all the county departments, I think that's the first thing I would need to do, I need to sit down with the department heads, just get a feel for everybody, get a feel for how everything's going, where the government's going, sit down with the fellow board of commissioners and do that afterwards. Road completions, I don't have to say anything about road completions, we have roads that have been sitting there, great barricades, we need to open those barricades, get these roads open. The Board of Education and the Sheriff's Department, I'm loving them all in one because they have a lot of work to do together. There's safety issues for the students, for their comfort in learning, there's issues for the Sheriff's Department with their needs in Lexington Park, and there's a youth center that we have to work on. We've got to give the kids something to do, I shouldn't say kids, our children something to do. It's a big factor in how they're going to move forward in this county. If we can keep those minds from being too idle, give them a good safe place, things will get better.
Mr. Coleman. What qualifies you to represent minority constituents?
So, when I first sat down with my wife and talked about running for office, and convinced her that it was a good idea with a baby on the way that I should enter into a campaign, one of the qualifications that she had for me was that I read a book called Privileged Power Indifference by Alan Johnson. I am not a minority, I am a white male, but I am aware that everybody has a different story, everybody has a different experience, so my qualification is that I am willing to talk and willing to listen to anyone, and that's what I would do as a commissioner. Thank you.
Mr. Guy.
Now, growing up in St. Mary's County, I dealt with a lot of minorities down in the southern part of county, the groups in the Ridge and Maryland area, they have came in and argued my father's story, be more than to pick up their soda crackers, Vienna sausage, and pint of whiskey if we wouldn't. But the biggest experience for me was when I got drafted, when in the military, and I dealt with all, doesn't matter what color you are, in the military, we went to basic training together, we learned that we had to work together in order to make things work. When you went out to the field, when I went to Vietnam in sixty-seven, sixty-eight, there was no doubt about it, I didn't care what color you were, you better do your job, or you could kill yourself or kill me. And so, the thing of it is, working together regardless of which you are, train these people and work together, you can make things happen, and that's just the way it works.
Mr. Thompson.
Two things. I grew up in the seventies at Great Mills High School with some great teachers, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Rasper, Mrs. Hill, Mrs. Flamm, they brought all of us together. Things changed in the mid-seventies and late-seventies at Great Mills. Everybody started to come together, it was really a great time, but I think my greatest accomplishment and the thing that's helped me the most is working with Christmas and April, I work with minorities, poor, handicapped, everybody in this county that needs something. We've been a group, thousands of members strong each year, that can come together, help this county, listen to everybody, hear their problems, go about it, way, formulate it and solve it, make sure that they're safe, warm at the end of the day. I've always been a person that listens to everybody. It's how I was born up, and that's how I roll, so that's how I'll take care of it.
Mr. Allen.
When I was growing up on Stonehill Farm, we had a gentleman of color that worked with my dad, and I can honestly say, I don't see color when I look out here. I've always lived my life that way. Your character dictates, not your color.
The last question, before we have closing remarks, we're going to start with Mr. Guy. What's your opinion about creating a living wage for all citizens of the county? What will you do about, what will you do to help make this happen?
Creating a living wage requires lots of things. One thing it does require is that we have a good economy, which we seem to have very well. We also have to diversify it, so we have all types of employment. We have to have a good education system, both academic and technical, to get these bills so people can go to work. The wages suck, we can't increase it, it's got to be increased by demand. We just can't go ahead and say, give everybody twenty dollars an hour. I don't know, it's just, it's hard to do some of that, it's kind of a venture fund for that. But we need to create the atmosphere in this county, and right now, we have, we actually have a low unemployment rate, we have a good economy, and by the creation of more and more diversification outside Patuxent and Red Test Center, we are creating new jobs, and that's what we're trying to do right now. And we'll continue to do that, continue the diversification, especially at the airport level. Let's face it, we're a flying community, that's why we concentrate at the airport out there, to the UAV technology, and all this is going to create more and more jobs.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes, we are very fortunate, our economy is good right now, the governor's given us a good moment to follow. We need to work with small business owners to make sure that they're, we hear what they need, what it takes, I mean, there's tax benefits for ten employees or less, but some small businesses have even less employees in that, we need to help them also. It takes small increments to bring people into jobs, it can't all just be big business as we go along, so follow the lead of what's going on right now in Annapolis. We're going to, you know, we have to work with, the county will have to work with all our employers here in the county, listen to what they say, see what we can do. I mean, if we all get together and get a force behind it, and get different people of different forums together to listen to it, we can create some of these jobs, especially to give the jobs that would ruin the...
Mr. Allen. What are your opinions about creating a living wage for all citizens of the county? What will you do to help make this happen?
Well, I think the opportunity in St. Mary's County is there for anybody willing to educate themselves, boost themselves, we've got the base, NESP, airport, we've got a lot of opportunities, and sometimes it's up to the people to boost themselves to get these jobs. I think the jobs are out there, and any help, again, for businesses, to help them along, we need to do that too.
Mr. Coleman.
We have to recognize that here in Lexington Park, if we go a mile in one direction past the chain link fence, the average salary is over a hundred thousand dollars. When we stay on this side of the fence, the average salary is significantly lower. There is a huge disparity in wealth in our county. Now, we need to continue to work with our Department of Economic Development, they have a great plan, there's a lot of potential coming down the road to help everybody. Dr. Janice Waldar likes to say, a rising tide lifts all boats, and that's a good analogy for what this county can do. When we get this third building at the higher ed center, we can have advanced training, we've got new markets, we're leading the country in a lot of things right here in St. Mary's County with the unmanned aerial systems, and just, it's a great opportunity for a lot of people, and we need to help spread that opportunity and teach our children so that they can rise up and be the best that they can be. Thank you.
But now, the closing remarks, we'll start with Mr. Thompson.
Again, thank you, everybody, for hosting us this evening and for this opportunity. When you leave here tonight, I would like you to know this, who leads matters. I was raised by a mom and grandparents to know the value of hard work and the value of the dollar. I know this county from north to south, east to west, and that's what my campaign symbol shows. When working with our Board of Education and school superintendent, I will provide a cooperative avenue to see that, one, our students are provided with the safest atmosphere in order for them to be comfortable enough to study, learn, and move ahead, and two, to help provide the salary and benefits that the superintendent needs to hire and retain the best teachers available to do so for those students. My experience with the less fortunate disabled and senior citizens has given me the insight into what we need to enrich their lives. ADA and senior housing plans must move forward, our youth centers must move forward. We need more than athletic fields to keep our child's minds busy and stimulated. Indoor venues will give them a safe, secure place to go and to enjoy others. I, with my fellow commissioners, work with our state delegation and Department of Public Works to ensure our roads issues stay at the forefront of our lists. The planning commission only sees development projects at concept time. Contrary to some beliefs, it's up to the Department of Land Use and Growth Management and their staff and their employer, the Board of County Commissioners, to make sure all the infrastructure is in place to satisfy our adequate public facilities rule, which they need to open those places before opening developments and shopping centers. In our Lexington Park Development District, we need to move forward with our sheriff's substation, which has been in planning stages for years, to give our citizens and business owners a place that provides safety, security, in a timely fashion. For businesses, we need more work.
Mr. Allen.
Thank you.
And what if not, just, we've all pretty much said the same thing, we want to, you take care of law enforcement, education, with the national politics as screwed up as they are. Don't look at the candidates here or the other candidates as Republicans or Democrats, look at the best candidates. If I'm not the choice that Eric is, so be it. If I was a brother choice than Randy, so be it, but make the choice for the best candidate, not Democrat or Republican. Thank you.
In conclusion, thank you to the League Women Voters and NAACP Lexington Park Library for hosting us tonight, and thank you to all of you for coming out and listening, for asking questions, and everyone who's watching online, listening. A lot, I would, I suspect that most people here are here because they support one particular candidate already, and maybe you're here with a totally open mind, but I hope that you can leave here with an open mind, having learned more about each of us. One of the most important roles in my mind for the county commissioners is to be responsive to constituents and to represent their district and the citizens in it, and the citizens in the whole county. It saddens me that my Democrat opponent was unwilling to attend a moderated forum to answer questions from citizens. I know that I want a commissioner to represent me that is willing to answer my questions and be there and speak to me, so it saddens me that he was unwilling to be here. I've been endorsed by the Sierra Club, by the teachers and the paraprofessionals of the Education Association of St. Mary's County, and by the Southern Maryland Association of Realtors. I received these endorsements not because I agreed with them on every issue a hundred percent, but I believe I received these endorsements because I was willing to have a conversation about all of the issues. I'm willing to talk to people who know more about stuff than me, I'm not the smartest guy in the room, but I'm willing to talk to the smartest people in the room. So, it's important that we have these conversations, it's important that we are willing to talk to the citizens. I may not have the most yard signs up in the county, but I'm willing to work hard and be the best commissioner that I can possibly be. My time's running out really quick here, so if you want to learn more about me, check out my website at www.vocoleman.com, and also, like Jack Bailey said, be sure to vote yes to ballot question one, no matter who you're voting for up here, vote for ballot question one to save funds for the school system from the seniors. Thank you.
In closing, I want to thank everyone for being out here tonight, this huge crowd, stadium, we're going in the back, and thank the NAACP, the Women League of Voters, and of course, the library. One thing about this commissioner forum, when you go, five commissioners sit down at a table, it takes three of us to say yes or no to any of these issues. We always sit there and discuss and open forums, and in the end, this group of commissioners has voted, and at the end, all five of us have supported the issues. We get behind them, all right, the vote's been done, we go for it, and that's the way it is. You've got to get things done. My, part of my job as commissioner president is make sure, every Thursday morning, I have a meeting with the staff, I put an agenda together, I make sure everything is there for the commissioners to read and be able to make a decision that chooses, because I said when they did the library and the guy got upset, it'll take three years, we're shoveling the ground, I said, my God, I mean, I live that long, I'm getting too old for this. But, you know, that's just the way it is, I understand government's a little bit slower, I've been, say, twenty-six years in the military, I understand about the slowness of time. The big thing is, this board has done a great job, and it's very, it's very obvious for those who've paid attention to our bonding rating and paid attention to our last few meetings here, we have done an outstanding job. I'll have to brag about it, because it is, it's been an outstanding job, we've balanced the budget, major issues have been pushed forward, and as far as things like education, we've funded MBOE every time, plus sixteen million more, go towards education, and also just passed, we just put another million dollars out for safety, public safety. We saw the sheriff had a problem, and it's unfortunate, but law enforcement had a hell of a hit, we gave immediate raises, nine-twenty percent to the correctionally, to the law officers, and seven percent to the correctional officers, to speed up the process and hope that they would fill their FTEs, and it's hopped out a lot, I think he's only about five or six short right now, so it takes time for a lot of this process. And to go on about the public safety, we've worked hard to get the boards established, and for the fire and rescue, thank you all very much, vote for Randy Guy.